Good evening. It's Thursday, May the 7th, 2020. This is the Town Council Work Session. Work Session. Due to the current public health emergency, the governor's stay-at-home order has set forth an executive order 20-03-30-01. In the sincere desire of the mayor and Town Council to protect the public health, safety, and welfare to the maximum extent possible, the general public may not enter Town Hall. Therefore, this meeting of the Town Council will proceed virtually as permitted under the Maryland Opens Meeting Act. The public is invited and encouraged to attend the meeting remotely.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Stacy, so we're, obviously, we just opened a meeting for our Town Council Work Session for May 7th. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Can we do roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Benton?
Here.
Mrs. Lawton?
Uh, Mrs. Oh, my goodness.
Miss Lawton?
I'm here.
Ms. Hagan?
Hello.
Mr. Hummel?
Here.
Mrs. Chiata, Dr. Chiata?
Yeah, the Mrs. thing, I don't love either, but I'm here.
I did.
Mr. Dotson?
I'm here.
And Mr. Trunkone?
I'm here.
Perfect.
Thank you, everybody. So let's go to Part 2, Step 2, Public Comments. The town of North Beach welcomes public comment. Take your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Also, this was when this went out on the street, we were, we also asked people if they had any email or any questions they want to email by 5 o'clock today. Stacy, do you have any email questions?
I do not.
All right, so let's open it up. Does any residents have any questions?
So if you have a question, you can use the group chat and I can read it.
Let me know when to go, Paul.
Another 30 seconds or so.
All right.
I don't see any questions, so we can, we can circle back if needed, if anybody.
All right, let's, let's close Public Comments and move right into Item 3, Business Items. This is a discussion about capital improvements in EDC Fund, and I'm going to turn this over to Joe.
Hello, how is everyone this evening?
Doing well.
Good. I'm going to share my spreadsheet with everyone. Is that all right?
Yep. Absolutely.
Okay, beautiful. Okay, I don't know how much in detail you want me to go over, but I'll just start, and you stop me when you have a question if, if it pertains to what I'm speaking of. Okay, so we have three different areas. We have the actuals for FY '20. We have the final budget that was adopted, and then column E of the spreadsheet, we have what we're proposing, the adjustments to FY '20, and then the last column is FY '21, and that's what's proposed. And you'll see all your notes are numbered, and they match the, the notes on your Word document to explain each of the items. So I thought that was the simplest method to use.
Perfect.
Okay, so the first item that comes, you'll see the large reduction in the MLGIP Reserve. Originally, it's $439,000 with the original budget, but due to some changes in project status, we've had to reduce that amount to $250,000, which is a good thing. So you're not, we're, we're being cautious. And then the $300,000, that number represents two things. It's community legacy grant money that we received in FY '20. And if you're not familiar, I'll explain. It's $250,000 for community legacy for the library. And then there's a $50,000 grant that goes towards the acquisition of the light bulbs on Bay Avenue. That money represents. Then the $700, $7,700, that's a reduction because Donnie Bowen was able to keep for the FASIA improvements on the Twin Beach Hospital Center next to a K&amp;H. Are you guys familiar with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so they did that, and then the mayor negotiated with Calvert Health, and they wound up paying for 50% of the FASIA improvements for that project. They're, they're long-term tenants. They're not going anywhere, so they have invested future there. So that was successful. So with that said, I'm going to move just a little bit further down on the revenue. And for FY '21, we've increased the request for the reserve funds for $539,000. And I broke that number down, I believe, in here. And the $75,000 is for the, in our funding for a study that is going to be shared between us and Chesapeake Beach. That detail was also listed in your notes, which is going to help us when we, once that's finished, help us be successful in getting grant money for additional stormwater work, which is well-needed.
Right.
Then the, that's been the handicap, is we don't have that study completed. And then the last part of that revenue is the state highway project. They've guaranteed $20,000 towards our storm pumps at Ninth Street to set some of the mitigation costs for their project. Isn't that correct, Donnie?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So that's the basis of the revenue there. Now, let's go down and hit the highlights of the projects. And I've already explained the $7,700, that's the FASIA. But the new number that you see, and you have to excuse me, I've got a cough. That's funny, I know. It's not like I didn't have one before, so. The $160,000 is, represents the $100,000 that was originally in the budget for the streetlights or the Bay Avenue lights and the flower beds. And if you remember, I think that was $96,000 was the purchase acquisition for that, Donnie?
Yeah, that's correct.
And that's, we, we did some enhancements then. I think we went with two heads on the pole, and it was well-thought-out. But with that said, you have to install those lights. So with the installation, Donnie has a price back from a bid that was out, and we'll discuss that once we get to that part of the meeting. But this number represents the installation and any unforeseen conditions that we run into. We're not saying we're going to need it, but if we did, we would have to have it to fix, correct that condition. So that's what that one section represents. And then we have the $250 for the library, and then $125 for stormwater projects. And what that represents is the $95,000 to clean the stormwater pipe between Bay Avenue and Chesapeake Avenue and Fifth Street. And the county's sharing cost in that. It's 50%, Donnie?
Yeah, that's correct, 50%.
Yeah, of the 95, right? Or of total?
Yeah, estimate, their cost share is going to be around 50,000.
Okay. Okay, so we have $125 in here, just in case, you know, if, if something, again, was to occur, and we needed a little extra money to take care of an issue. We want to be able to take care of that issue while we're down there.
Yeah, we also work with the county, not to interrupt you. We work with the county. We had money in there for disposal. Luckily, with Mayor Benton and our staff, we work with Calvert County, and the Appeal Landfill is going to take the material free of charge also. So that saved us quite a bit of money. $33,000, we're talking to them and getting them to take the material. We have to pay for the hauling to get it there, but they're going to accept the material for free, so. And it was $140 a ton at one time for 500 tons, so.
Yeah.
That was quite, that was a good savings on that.
That was a hard-fought battle, and Donnie and the mayor really took that, so that's wonderful. The, the other item, well, we have a standard item with the Boys and Girls Club now, just for general maintenance. We have the elevator, then there's some, some minor things that we take care of throughout the year that seem to happen, like a outdoor faucet or something like that seems to break off accidentally. You know what I'm saying? So just little minor repairs. And then we have a $10,000 item for the Sunrise Gardens for flagstone around the ponds. I don't know if anybody's been out there lately with this pandemic going on, but even before that, you could see the wear and tear around the pond and what that was doing to the grass area and things out there. And it just doesn't represent what the park should be and is. So we, we suggest that as far as improvements, it'd be a flagstone out there, a little further buffer around the pond area. And that's what we believe that cost is. And then road and street construction, and that's the general item that we like to budget each year, just so we have something that we can complete each year, as far as a block of road or a sidewalk, depending on the conditions. Now, this year, we didn't progress as far, and with everything that has happened this year, I, I don't see that as a failing. I think that it just happened to happen that way. But next year, hopefully, it's going to be a better year, and we have more time to focus on that roads and street block of improvements. Then we have, this is, this one's my favorite part here, the $25,000 for the additional radio sensors for existing meters. And some of you may remember when we spoke about the radio meters and the meter replacement, how old some of those meters were. Well, we did that, and we were successful, and we replaced all those meters, and they worked properly. Clearly, this last billing was almost flawless. But what's not there is the new meters that were, have a very short, a long life ahead of them. There was 170 of them that we didn't feel like we wanted to waste the money to replace the whole meter because it really didn't need it, because the meter's fairly new. But apparently, we can buy a radio sensor housing that goes on top of an existing meter, which converts it to a radio read. And that's what we need to have happen, just because technology has left us behind. And we're just starting to understand what that really means, because we lost our touch read interrogator between January and this last read. And I don't mean lost it as we can't find it. I mean, we lost it that it does not work properly anymore. So we cannot read those meters properly without it. We, we have one that we're borrowing right now, so I'm not going to lie to you and say we can't do it without it, and you got to do this. That's not the case. You can do anything you want if you want to do it bad enough. I'm just saying, it's going to take a lot more time to do it this way. So what I suggest, it's $25,000 additional to do the meters that we have left. There's 170 of these meters left, and then all your meters will finally be radio read, with the exception of a few 2-inch meters. I think you had three of them, Donnie?
Yeah, and we have ordered two, so we only have like one or two left that aren't. But they're the larger 2-inch meters that are in the bigger commercial buildings.
Okay.
Couple of commercial buildings that we have in town, like Russo's Professional, West Lawn has one. But they're easy access, a couple that we have, and they're pretty expensive for the 2-inch. But we will, you know, eventually put them in the budget also.
Yes. So with that said, and if you remember any of the highlights from our water and sewer, we continue to pay towards a capital item in our budget to pay back the acquisition of those meters that we purchased for replacement. We can just add this to the dollar amount, and collect that money and move forward to reimburse MLGIP for the monies that are advanced. That's what that $25,000 represents. Does anyone?
I don't want to hold up the meeting. I said, I don't want to hold up and drag it out, but I just, a quick, couple of quick things to add to what Joanne said. With the radio reads, I think we read them. We bought a tablet to read them with now, a little tablet. We can read them in probably a half hour. We can do the whole town. Where it used to take a day and a half. So we can read them in a half hour. So labor, you're going to save money. But also, there's a feature in all the radio reads that we bought an attachment for like 300-some bucks, where you can hook this up to a radio read meter and go back for 45 days. So when you have a resident complaining about their water bill being high or something else, you know, out crazy, doesn't look right, we can put that on there. We can actually go back and look at the meter for 45 days to track exactly when flow was used, what might have happened, whatever, so we can get a lot more data with the radio reads for customer satisfaction, so.
You can, and you could read in a half an hour, but I'm not going to, I wouldn't set that as the standard. That was pretty high bar to meet every time we read meters.
Right.
An hour would be good, yeah.
An hour, yeah, we'll go for an hour.
Yes. Okay, so that's what, that's what that number represents. And again, it's reimbursable in the water fund. And the bypass, you want to go into a little detail on this, Donnie? You speak better on the bypass connection.
No, it's a pretty simple thing. We did the wellhouses, everybody, you know, whoever came over and said it, everybody knows. We got the wellhouse complete. Every year, we have to take the water tower offline to clean the inside. We have a contract with a company that actually goes in, cleans it, inspects it, videos it. The timing wasn't right for trying to get the wellhouse done and putting a bypass connection in. So we wanted to put some money in because we still want to do the bypass connection, because what that'll do, that'll allow us to use the well that's at the public works yard, and we can turn a valve, we can bypass the water tower if that's down for any reason, painting, whatever it may be. And we can, but we can still use that well pump, and we can pump right into the system. We have one well pump at Greenwood Avenue, and we've been using that every time we take the tower offline to paint it or do any, you know, heavy-duty maintenance work on it. But that only leaves just one well pump. So if something were to happen to that well pump, we wouldn't have a backup to supply water to the town if we're doing maintenance on the tower. This way, you close a valve, you have to do some piping to hook the two together, but you'll be able to, you know, you'll have two wells, even though the tower's offline. So we plan to do that. We usually schedule that in the fall, right after Labor Day sometime, where the weather's still good. We get them down, they drain the tower, look inside, and we can do that job at the same time. So maybe October-ish, we're anticipating trying to do that work.
Okay. And then the next part of it, and this is all water fun, that's why I put it in blue, was, is a $40,000 item for the new saddles along the main line that's running under where they're doing the work on 261. Donnie, you want to speak a little bit on that?
Yeah, what that is, is with the 261 project, we lobbied pretty hard with the state. We tried to get them to replace that whole water line, because when they add 18 inches or so, two foot in some areas of pavement there, that means your water line would be seven feet under the road there, and you'd have to dig through 18 inches of asphalt, plus the existing asphalt to even get to the water line. They, Antelope County had to pay for their own upgrade of their forest main line, and they called it a betterment, so the state wouldn't do it. But what this will do, we're going to go, instead of replacing the whole line because it's plastic, we're going to go, we have like six or eight services there, we're going to put new saddles, and we're going to run a new line from the main, water main, to the houses and the meter pits. And that way, we'll have brand-new piping. It'll still be buried seven feet, but at least we'll have, you know, you won't have to come back later, cut the road up after they do all the roadwork if we have a problem there at one of those saddles. And the saddles have been on for almost 25 years, so they're getting towards their lifespan anyway. So we thought it'd be smart to do that ahead of time, instead of having a problem after a brand-new roads paved.
It's been 30.
Yeah, it's probably 30. So it'll be from Ninth Street up until Dr. Kelly's old house. We're going to replace any meter or saddle or anything suspect from there to the end of the line there.
Okay, so that's what that project represents, and that's the total of the water. And again, it's reimbursable to the reserve fund, but it does come out of water. The last project we have listed here is a doozy, and this is the sewer station at Greenwood Avenue. And this is a cost-share project with Calvert County. 50% of the flow goes into the pump station is from Calvert County. They've acknowledged that, and we've been working together on the flows that do come into town. It's amazing to see how things have progressed. But like I said, it's a cost-share. The only issue that is at the forefront of my mind is that we need Calvert County to finalize the agreement on how they may want to pay or structure a payment plan back to us, because we know it needs to be done now. The county doesn't react as fast as we do. And Donnie can probably go into a little more detail on just some of the issues and the emergencies that they have to deal with up there, just because of the age of the, and the design. I think it's more design and age, because you can replace a pump, but its design is an issue. So I just wanted you to know that it is a cost-share pump station. It's a 50/50. Upper County will have to reimburse, but I do not know the terms of the reimbursement yet, what period of time that will be. It may be, you know, $15,000 to $20,000 a year for five years, depending on where this cost lays at, because Donnie has 150, but he just wanted to make sure he had enough in there, because he didn't want to have to come back and ask for more money. So Donnie, would you like to go in a little detail? Not too much, because it's.
Yeah. Yeah, real quick, the station was built in 1984, and North Beach, you know, pretty much, probably didn't have that many lots added since then. But if anybody, even when you drive out west on 7th, 8th, and 9th Street, west of Greenwood, you know how many houses Calvert County has added out there. So back when the station was designed, it was handling the flow just with North Beach, Burn Oaks, and, you know, a couple houses outside of town limits. But with all the houses that built on the outside, I like to say west side of Greenwood now, the pumps are small. They constantly getting clogged up with rags. They need to be upgraded. We're going to try to take the chance to put an accurate flow meter also in the station so we can meter what's coming from Calvert County, so we can accurately bill them. We have to go up there, Mayor Benton can kind of vouch for this, two or three times a week now to pull out the rags, disposable wipes, everybody being ham, of course, and throwing them. We try to, um, put out email blasts. We have to go up two or three times a week to just pull those out. We upgraded Bay Avenue, put some new-style pumps that they have out now that are kind of bypass the rags through them. And knock on wood, we cut down to maybe going over there once a month to do the same deal. So I'm hoping to get similar-type pumps in there, enlarge the pump size. Right now, they're five horsepower. We'd probably go to a seven or eight horsepower pump. We wouldn't have to build a new structure, I don't think. But, and we also do have updated controls, so it wouldn't be a total rehab, but it would. And we, we're looking at putting our emergency bypass pump. So if we lose power, because the generator is actually 1984 also, and they don't make parts for it anymore, but if we lose power, we're going to put a pump like we did on the beach, Chesapeake Avenue Station, and at Bay Avenue, where the pump kicks on as a diesel motor if you lose power, and that would pump all the flow that would go through that station, so you wouldn't have to worry about a sewer spill.
Okay. So basically, that's your capital existing to try to finish out what we have this year, and you're projected for FY '21. Does anyone have anything they need me to clarify or any discussion before we go to EDC?
I have a question, since we're on, on pumps. On Ninth Street, I thought, I thought in the notes it said something about monies put in, was it number 65? But I don't see it there.
Yes. The pumps are in FY '21. They're on line item 68. I'm sorry, I missed this. The 125 is for to clean out the pipe, the 95,000 to clean out the pipe, plus any residuals. This right here is for the two pump station upgrades, Ninth Street and Fifth Street.
Okay. I'm just curious, and maybe Donnie can just, we don't take too much time, but I mean, 100,000, is that, will that pay for a full pump on Ninth Street, Donnie, or we have to?
Yeah, we've, we've got some preliminary estimates, and like, if we just did two new pumps, upgraded the pumps itself, we're talking about 40, you know, right around 40,000, because I don't think we need to redo the concrete structure there either. Gary, who is Cooperman, who was on our flood committee, he's a pro bono, some engineering, and has some preliminary drawings. He kind of went too big, so we're right, we're working with him now, because, you know, the wet well, you can't get too large a pump in there, because then you're overdoing it. Your pumps are coming on, tripping out. But we're right now, the flood committee is looking at that design, and we should have something in the next couple of months. With the current virus situation, we've had some guys who have come down, some manufacturer reps that were scheduled to come down, but just when everything hit, we kind of stalled on that. We did have somebody, I sent some drawings to two different pump manufacturers with the preliminary drawings that Gary has out there, so we got people thinking about it. Actually, a couple stopped by, but we haven't followed up that much, just because of the virus, to be honest with you. That's why we, plus with the budgets, we moved that money that we were going to spend in '20 to '21, because we're definitely going to do it, but we're just, don't want to rush now with everything going on.
Well, we'll be there, we'll be there soon enough. Okay, I just want to make sure you thought that was. I know Paul Woodburn was working on some design, and part of the big thing, I mean, we had that huge, you know, flood last week, but was the duck bill, I mean, a different, a different design.
A big part of that, too, Gwen, is we're really curious. We, we want to get the road raised, and then we'll have an actual scenario of what's going to happen when we do close that berm off at the, right by Dr. Kelly's house there. We did have a real, a whole lot of water there left, but a lot of it was coming over the seawall, but some did come around the end there. But we kind of want to get them to do the road, and that'll give us a better volume, if you know what I mean, of what'll actually happen with just rainwater and not the tide coming around there. Does that, I got a video. I got a video, when we had that Thursday or whatever, it was real rough that day with, with the waves coming over the seawall, plus coming around, like 10 o'clock was high tide. So we had a video of water just running there by Dr. Kelly's house, filling up around in that whole area there. So when that gets completed, we'll get a truer, you know, estimate of what kind of water is actually coming in there from rainwater, not the bay water.
Was some of that, I know, I don't want to take too much time, but just quickly, was some, is some of the water actually backfilling through the pump and coming up the storm drain, too?
It's coming, well, the storm drain couldn't take anymore, so what was trying to come in was coming back out of the storm drain, but it was coming in from different areas, but it wasn't coming through the pump itself.
Okay. All right, thank you, Donnie.
Okay, well, I'm glad that we went back and looked at that, because I skipped over this, you see this TBD? TBD for Town Hall and Boys and Girls Club?
Right.
Reason that's there is because we don't have a number yet. And we didn't want to rush and give you a number, but it's going to be something that we're going to bring to you probably sooner than later, and it's related to some of the issues that we are experiencing at Town Hall and the exterior of the Boys and Girls Club. So I don't know how much detail we needed to go into that tonight, because you don't have a number yet, or if you just want to go into detail when we get a little closer and actually.
That's probably better.
That's what I think. Mayor?
I agree. We, we're going to address both, both challenges. Last year, we started the building maintenance with the inspections. DB has a book that he's gone around, his staff has gone around, and we, we've come across some, some challenges that we need to address, but they're not something that DPW can handle. So we have to bring in an outside source to handle them. And we're hoping within the next couple of weeks, couple of months, we can get these. And we're hoping within the next couple of weeks, couple of months, we can get these, these people in here. Because it's not residential, it's commercial, and there are not that many out there that does this kinda work. So we'll get you some hard numbers here very soon.
Okay. So I think that we've went in detail over the capital. If no one has any questions, does anyone? Then I'd like to move on to EDC, if that's okay.
Hey, Joanne, a quick question.
Yes, no, no problem.
So we, highway user revenues, I know we're not talking about that, that was in the, in the overall budget generally.
Yes.
Are we not using those funds for highway, for sidewalk repairs?
We have, we have debt service that was taken out to do major road, extensive road and sidewalk repairs that state highway revenue contributes to. That was prior to, I mean, you have debt service, capital bonds for those works.
Is that under general fund, Joe?
Yes. It fits the criteria of use for state highway user fund revenue.
Example is what the Chesapeake Avenue upgrade, and like with the bump out streets.
Well, that's, that's one example, but I think, Greg, it might have been right before you came on camera. You've been here a while. But right before, we had a bond, I think it was in twenty-ten, was a CDA bond. And there was an extensive road project that was done, and we were paying that, we're almost done paying that off. And then when you get to the next one, which will be this street scape project, which is the most current for you guys, is all those road improvements that you've done. Plus, you claim any type of, not maintenance, but major, I mean, not minor, but major repairs. You claim those towards state highway, road improvements, and anytime you put gravel on the sides of the road, those type of things, Greg.
I got it.
Did you, did, do you need to see what we certify for?
Yeah, I was just looking at, I just went back, I was just looking at the eleven grand. I was just wondering, but I'm good. I got it.
Yeah, we didn't spend that much. We had paid at seventy-five, but we didn't spend that much.
Okay.
Of it.
And let's see. I have to come back to the other one.
It's okay. If you think about
I'm just going by on my head here, so go ahead. I'll come. Thanks.
Okay. All right, can I flip over to EDC now?
Yep.
Okay. All right, let's talk about EDC. At the end of June of twenty nineteen, your balance in EDC was a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. As of today, you've brought in forty-one thousand in revenue. And I don't foresee you bringing in a whole lot more until June thirtieth, but you have a buffer. So total revenue in EDC at this moment is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And with that said, we have our actual expenditures, which are basically the same ones we've had for the last couple of years with the exclusion of Moscow. We don't, we don't have too much of that anymore. So FY twenty, we had anticipated a budget of twenty-eight thousand in advertisement. But what was learned over the course of the year, and I don't know if Dawn is Dawn on the line? Well, if Dawn was on the line, she could
I was. I'm here.
Okay, good. We were talking a little bit about advertisement, and I was gonna tell them a little bit about the reduction and how Comcast Spotlight is not the method that we are leaning towards. So reduction in costs. Did you wanna speak a little bit about that?
Just a couple words. It seems as, as the years have gone by, we've done, each year, we've done a little less of the display advertising, like in newspapers. We still do a couple of the magazines, and we did cut out the Comcast ad. We did that for a few years. We get a lot of free advertising on Facebook and Instagram, our social media pages. We get a lot of exposure through the State of Maryland tourism site, so we decided to cut out that Comcast ad. Now, there may be, you know, something else down the road that, you know, will have a new opportunity, but for now, we're gonna do these types of things that I just mentioned, more online advertising.
Yes. So that's why you see the difference in the numbers, which is good, not, not a waste of money, just well-used money. So we have, the next item is the Christmas. That goes to offset some of the labor costs for the installation, all those Christmas lights. Then we have code enforcement. You're basically paying for an employee to help with code enforcement. And then the ecotourism director, that helps offset the, some of the, some of the wages for that position. So those are the only items that we have allocated out of EDC at this time.
Joanne, just a quick question. We had the, and Stacy may be able to remind us where those funds, the art competition that we just did with the banners?
Yes.
Was that?
Sunrise.
Was that in the other, the regular, the general budget?
General.
Okay, I just wanna make, just wanna make sure it was in there.
We need to get rid of it, Gwen, don't worry.
I didn't think so.
I know you know where I live.
I have to double check.
You checked twice last year and Yes, there.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's your EDC budget. Again, no, no big surprises. Matter of fact, probably pleasantly surprised. I did put a little, I would like to relabel this one, instead of calling it Moscow, I would like to just call it Christmas equipment. Because it might not be Moscow who supplies it, but most of our things are purchased from there, so we're kind of in a loop. But I do have just little incidentals, like for example, the little light boxes, or what do you call those little things that we have for the lights, the trees and all? If those were to walk off, we need to purchase more, things like that, minor stuff.
Yeah, gun change it, change of odd, seventeen to Christmas.
Yeah. So, excuse me.
You wanna put the two of them together?
Well, two of what?
Sixteen and seventeen together.
Oh, no.
Seventeen is them.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's employee payroll. Yeah, no, I don't.
Well, then you gotta call it something else. You can't call it Christmas also, Ben.
Yeah, Christmas labor.
Christmas supplies, Christmas labor.
Yeah, that's what I say. I just wanna get rid of Moscow.
Yes, please do.
Banners from Moscow as well?
Yes, we, we do, we do, Mickey, but Stacy has banners under Stacy has banners under, oh, Lord.
Waterfront. Waterfront?
Well, she's got them a couple places. Waterfront, events, those type of things under the general fund. But they could be, it could be something we purchased from Moscow also, Mickey. We just find they're expensive through Moscow. But it depends on what you're looking for. So this is your EDC budget. I presented the capital. You have those. I'm excited, because next week is the public hearing. I don't get to be at the town hall, but I was hoping. But I will put a packet together for you of all the budgets that we have spoken on and the notes and the backup documentation that I provide. And I have one thing that I need to discuss with you before we get off of here, Mayor. We talked a little bit about it this week, was the Sheriff's Department and the invoice, the actual budget that we got. And I don't, you guys might remember, last September, you agreed out of budget cycle for an increase for a certain position, I believe it was corporal, and then two steps.
Yep.
Okay, well, that's fine, that's fine. It's just what I was anticipating, because I, I I thought we had kinda already moved past it. They sent me a budget, was it Monday, Mayor?
Yes.
And it was fifteen thousand dollars higher than my proposed budget to you. And that's part of that, because I didn't get it from the county until Monday. So with that said, I have to shave fifteen thousand dollars out of my general fund budget.
This is not, this is not the new deputy we talked about.
It is not.
Right, this, we've already moved on from that, the new deputy that I presented a month ago or two months ago. This is, a deputy was agreed upon a year ago, eighteen months ago, whatever.
September, it was an increase for a deputy.
Yes, increase.
Much a new body, it was an increase to a deputy. So that's the difference. It adds up to being fifteen thousand dollars by the time we're said and done.
Is that negotiable?
No. You've already, you, you can't go back through time. You don't change your mind.
Fifteen thousand negotiable.
No, you're already in it.
I like your way of thinking.
I'm trying, I'm trying, come on now.
My job to help you find it, your way through it.
And we'll find it. Joe's got the magnifying glass out. We'll find it. I gave her some recommendations, she's got some stuff. So when you get the new package, just, you know, take your time, go through it. If you have any questions, obviously ask Joe.
Are you gonna put notes, Joanne, like if we see a deduction, so we don't have to guess where, are you gonna like?
Oh, honey, don't I always give you notes? I try to color code every
I know you do. You do an amazing job.
Wonderful.
But I will send you, I'm gonna send you a side note, not what goes on the public website. Just a little side note to give you the list of the items I'm hitting.
Okay.
Okay, just so you know, and, and then so it'll total at the bottom for you, a little fifteen thousand dollars.
This is great.
Yes.
Can you explain this again for me, please?
I can.
So why did, so we had one figure before, and now we got an additional fifteen grand, so break it down for me again, please.
In September, we, you guys had agreed to the increase for one of the deputies from, what's below corporal, Mayor?
Well, Marine Corps is Lance Corporal, but I'm not sure about the deputy.
Anyway, it was a, it was below corporal. You had agreed to increase that deputy
Promotion.
Corporal, which was a cost. And then you agreed to two steps, one for one particular deputy and another for a different deputy. Those two steps together, along with the increase for the corporal, total that fifteen thousand dollar difference.
For the year.
For the year, that we have to come up with, because I, I didn't include that.
Okay, stop right there. So when the last time we've done one of these increases like this?
September of twenty nineteen, you did it.
Okay, so, so is this an annual thing for them?
No.
No.
No. They, they come to you and they ask you.
Okay.
Would you be willing to fund this? And knowing that it's perpetual, as long as you got that deputy, you gotta pay for it.
So this is on top of the three or four hundred, whatever we're paying, that's on top, this is in addition to that amount, correct?
Yes.
It takes it to
Five fifteen, or five sixteen, five hundred and sixteen.
Wow.
Five oh one.
I don't wanna hold, I don't wanna hold up now, but I think we're gonna have to have a little more discussion about this the next time it comes up. That's my two cents, and I wish to move on.
We, absolutely, Greg, and that's why we, when we talked about it, the last conference, our last work session. You know, we, we agreed that, voted on, agreed that we're not gonna or accept or approve them bringing on a new deputy to our cost. Absolutely, it will continue to be a conversation, Greg, I agree.
Yep, all right. Thank you. Thanks, Joanne.
Okay, all right. But anyway, I'll send you out notes as quick as I can, and then, of course, a full packet. But how did you guys like doing it in phases?
Love it.
I like it.
I liked it.
So much easier.
Did you guys like it? Greg, did you like it? Paul?
Yes, definitely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Made it easier.
It just gives me the opportunity to visit with you guys.
More time in the spotlight.
I don't know about that, I don't care about that.
I'm teasing.
Just trying to get the Marine to understand stuff, but it's all good.
No, it's much, much better.
Ooh rah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know what the hoo-ah was, but all right, that's cool.
I'm just saying.
I'm about to get Eric on air. Quinn, bring Eric on next time, he's filling in.
Oh, that was funny. Okay. Am I done, Mayor?
Uh, well, yes, for, for a second. Let's move. So again, with questions you have, please email, get ahold of Joanne and get them answered. Again, next, next month, we're gonna vote on this, and we wanna make sure you feel comfortable with this. I think she's done an amazing job. I love breaking it down. It is easier for me to understand, Greg. Thank you. So let's move on to the next business item, and that is review of the bids received for the light pole installation. This is a discussion. We're not, next Thursday, or next meeting, we're gonna vote on it, but tonight is about a discussion. You have it in your package, and RFP went out for the installation of the lights on Bay Avenue. I'm very excited about it. We got a lot of great movements going on right now, a lot of great items. Three, Stacy, how many, we, we went after a lot of people, guys. We did it tremendously a bit. We sent it to a lot of people. Plus, Stacy went out like an hour and made sure as many people as advertised. How many people actually got the notice, Stacy?
Ten companies.
So ten companies had a right to come here to bid on this, and we got three estimates. And you have it in your package. DB can go into detail and explain it to you. I just wanna say this to you, when you look at the three bids. What a difference.
Like a trash bid.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but I will tell you this, you know, to me, I think the reason why I, the lowest bid is the one that has worked with us for, I don't know how many years, is because they know our town, they're local, their travel time is five minutes, and they do a lot of work for our town. So I think that's why their number came in, and it's gonna keep his employees busy during the COVID-nineteen. So I think there's a reason for it, it's not a misbid. Rick, you know, knows what he's doing. I think that CG, I think VK, they all are exceptional companies. It just that, it just made more sense for Rick to be able to do the numbers he did. I mean, instead of that, DB, is there anything you'd like to add about the, the three estimates?
Um, one, yeah, one thing real quick is Rick did do all the original conduit in the flyer beds. He pulled new wires, so he's real familiar with it, so he kinda, and he was real good at the meeting, explaining to the other contractors, so he wasn't trying to hide anything from them. He was willing to help them out. But we did get a preliminary cost estimate before we send the bids out from Cox Electric, and they were right around thirty-three thousand also. So it's not like Rick's number is totally out of the water. We had another contractor, but unfortunately, we did invite them to do the bid on the project, but they didn't put in a bid this time when the RFP went out. We did, kinda like to give the council a rough idea what it was called, cost estimate, had them look at it. But like I say, unfortunately, they didn't bid on the project. They were contacted. They said they were gonna come and bid on it, but they didn't show up, so.
You know, it's kind of interesting, if you add the three, the three prices together and take an average, the average is Rick's price.
Yeah.
Which I thought was interesting.
You need to get out more.
Yeah, well, we do have all the lights in stock. Sorry, we're, we're kinda
You won't let me, you won't let me.
You won't let me, you won't let me.
We do have all the parts and pieces at the shop, we, next week, please ask me any questions or email, because we would like to go ahead and proceed with this. If we can get started, we might be able to get these things in before it gets crowded, and also before, so it won't disrupt the flower beds. You know, we still have a little bit of time, we did know to give them a forty, I think, what stays forty-five day?
Forty-five day.
Completed, totally completed.
And we can't vote on it tonight, though, can we?
No, it's, it's next Thursday night.
Yeah, okay.
And then can, can I also say something real quick?
Absolutely.
We also have bids coming in on Monday for cleaning of the coop ponds. So depending on what the mayor would like to do, we may bring that to you on Thursday also. They don't come until Monday.
If there's, if we can get it to you soon enough, maybe we can, you know, knock it out. It's, it's on the capital improvements down there, so we definitely like to see it in twenty-twenty, since it's all there, ready to go, so, yeah. Just stay, you're going to get some emails, guys, so just make sure, you know, check out the emails. Any questions for Donnie while we got him on the phone?
I, I just wanted to talk to him about composting.
Well, we could do it, just not right now.
Well, the, okay, the environmental committee looked at composting and said, no, the town can't do it, they don't have the people to do it, they don't, it takes somebody dedicated to compost. And so, and this was through Karen Molina, she was the first one that said no, which I thought was interesting. But she says it takes, it's too much effort for what we have.
All right, do we, real quick, though, we got, does anybody have any questions about the light for DB?
No.
Nope, 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 all right, I just want to make sure, Jay, not to cut you off, but we, this work session, I'm going to stick to the schedule. Because if somebody hears we're talking about something that's on the schedule, I don't need them to yell at me.
I do have one quick question, Mayor, how quick can they get started if, if we approve this selective event the next Thursday?
DB, I talked, Rick, I did, I mean, Greg, I did talk to Rick, and I let him know he was low bidder, and I kind of told him that we were going to hopefully, you know, award next Thursday night, so to kind of gear up his guys, and we'd like to get it done, so we could, you know, not disturb the flowers, or have, you know, minimal disturbance, because we're never going to get busy down there sooner than later now. But I'm hoping he starts, you know, if he gets a contract by Friday, he'll start that Monday, maybe.
That's good.
I'm not sure of that, but that's what I, you know, I've already been talking to him, I'd let him know he's low bidder to try to get him, push him along a little bit there.
No, so most likely a week after his grant, it, they can probably start it, which is.
Right, sometime in the next following week, I hope, yep.
Cool, all right, thanks, thanks, Donnie, thanks, Mayor.
No problem. All right, does anybody have any other questions? And Jay, you had a great question, but we need to, we.
That was on the list.
What list?
It was on the budget.
Was it? Oh, apologize, I didn't know it was on. Okay, well.
Call me tomorrow, Jay.
Okay, I will.
All right, that's it, folks, I appreciate you plugging in, another great work session, I did amazing, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Good night.